I welcome the secretary for transport and housing and his team. This is in relation to the estimate of the house of the housing session. Transport will be another session. Members who would like to speak, please press the request to speak button. And I ask the secretary to give a brief opening remark. Thank you. Chairman, housing is a livelihood issue of greatest concern to the current term government. Based on the supply led and flexibility principles under the long term housing strategy, LTHS. The government will continue to increase public and private housing supply through a multi-pronged strategy. I'm going to briefly introduce the following measures. According to the projection announced in the Long Term Housing Strategy Annual Progress Report twenty nineteen. The housing, the total housing supply target for the ten year period from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty nine thirty will be four hundred and thirty thousand units. According to the public private split of new housing supply of seventy to thirty. The public housing supply target will be three hundred and one thousand units for public housing. Comprising two hundred and ten thousand public rental housing PRH or green form subsidized home ownership scheme GSH unit. And ninety one thousand other subsidized sales flats. Assuming that all sites identified as of now can be smoothly delivered on time for housing development. The estimated public housing production for the ten year period from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty nine to thirty is about two hundred and seventy two thousand units. Which is twenty four thousand units more than that for the ten year period from twenty nineteen to twenty to twenty twenty eight to twenty nine, as announced in twenty eighteen. The extent of shortfall has narrowed from sixty seven thousand units as projected in twenty eighteen to twenty nine thousand units. The government will continue to spare no efforts in increasing the short, medium and long term housing land supply through a series of measures. Including pressing ahead with various planned initiatives such as rezoning existing sites and carrying out major development projects. Furthermore, the chief executive announced in the twenty nineteen public policy address a series of new measures to increase land supply such as invoking the lands resumption ordinance and other applicable ordinances to resume private lands for development of public housing or starter homes for Hong Kong residents project. And the concrete implementation of land sharing pilot scheme. These measures help increase the land supply for public housing development. Relevant departments will strive to implement these new initiatives. In view of the current tough economic situation, the financial secretary has introduced a series of counter cyclical measures. Which include paying one month's rent for lower income tenants living in the public rental housing units of the Hong Kong Housing Society, Hong Kong Housing Authority HA and the Hong Kong Housing Society, Hong Kong HS. The estimated expenditure of the proposed measure is about one thousand eight hundred and twenty nine million dollars. It is estimated that the HA and the Hong Kong HS will implement the rent payment about one month to one and a half months after the passage of the appropriation bill and a total of around seven hundred and ninety thousand tenants will benefit. Furthermore, the twenty nineteen policy address proposed that the HA make active preparation to accelerate the sale of unsold flats in the tenants purchase scheme, TPS estates. With a view to further meeting the homeownership aspirations of PRH tenants. Currently, there are around forty one thousand unsold flats in the thirty nine TPS estates. We will at a later time consult Legislative Council Panel on Housing regarding how to accelerate the sale of these flats. And put up concrete recommendations on sales arrangements for HA's consideration in second and third quarter of this year. In relation to starter home, the government invited public tender for a private residential site on Anderson, Han- Anderson Road, Kun Tong. On the twentieth of March for implementing the second starter home pilot project. The tender invitation will close on the fifteenth of May this year. According to the land sales condition, the government will randomly select no less than one thousand starter home units from the completed residential units built by the developer. These units will be offered for sale at eighty percent of the prevailing market prices to eligible applicants. In relation to increasing public housing development, the HA is exploring the feasibility of redeveloping individual factory estates as appropriate for public housing use. Particularly to increase the supply of PRH units, taking into account individual sites conditions and arrangements. The HA has commenced the respective preliminary assessments, which are expected to be completed at the end of this year. The HA will announce the results and recommendations as appropriate. With regards to the promotion of transitional housing, the task force on transitional housing under the Transport and Housing Bureau has been working closely with community organizations to facilitate completion of these projects to increase the supply. At present, the task force has identified sufficient site for the provision of ten thousand transitional housing units in the coming three years. The government is assessing the feasibility to develop transitional housing on a number of government institution or community sites that have no development plan in the short term. With a view to meeting the further increase of the supply target of transitional housing to fifteen thousand units for the coming three years. As announced by the chief executive in mid-January. The community organizations will announce details of these projects at suitable junches. We're grateful for the Legco's approval of the funding allocation of five billion dollars last month to set up a funding scheme to support the implementation of transitional housing projects by NGOs. The government expects to formally launch the funding scheme in mid-two thousand twenty. Besides, the task force will continue to provide assistance to organizations to apply for subsidies and offer advice to individual projects. Furthermore, to alleviate the hardship faced by families waiting for PRH and those living in unpleasant environments. The government will on a trial basis provide cash allowance to eligible general applicant household who are not living in public housing, not receiving the CSSA and have been waiting for PRH for more than three years until they're offered the first flat allocation. The government is working out the details of the trial scheme with a view to launching the scheme in the second half of next year. Before the introduction of the trial scheme, the Community Care Fund will put forward two rounds of one-off living subsidy for the low income households not living in PRH and not receiving the CSSA in the financial year of two thousand twenty and twenty one. The Transport and Housing Bureau will also set up a working group. It will engage consultants to examine the feasibility and if so viable options for implementing tenancy control on subdivided units as well as examine various subjects relating to SDU tenancy control. We aim to complete the consultancy studies by the first half of next year. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer questions from members relating to policies. Controlling offices will respond to questions relating to implementation matters. There'll be sixteen members asking questions, each will have five minutes. Question and answers included. Doctor Kwakaki, Miss Helena Wong, Mister Ronnie, Ronic Chan, Mister Rebecca Chan, Mister Wilson, or Miss Doctor Ching Chong Tai, Miss Alice McNissalo-Waycock, Mister Kwak Wai Keng, Doctor Presillia Leng, Mister Jeremy Tam and Tony Tsai. I would like to ask about forty six. That is in relation to the increase in manpower to deal with transitional housing. As you know full well, secretary, that this transitional housing is only a half-way stop. What we would like to happen is that people who have been waiting for many years for PRH units will eventually get one. Before the start of this term of government, the waiting time for four point six years now is five point four years. Before you took office, for elderly applicants, they have to wait for two point six years, now three years. That means your government have not resolved any housing problems that we face. The situation has gone worse. Transitional housing is important, but it's something that is a Band-Aid solution. There are about two hundred and ten thousand households living in subdivided flats. Can you give them a timeframe when they can expect to be allocated a PRH housing? When we can foresee an economic downturn, that means more and more people may lose their job or will underwork. That means those who will get on the waiting list and who, those who need public housing will increase, the number will increase. We see that property prices and rental both stand high. A lot of people don't even have sufficient money to even survive, let alone to live. They don't have enough money because they don't have enough work. And there are no, there is no help coming to those who are living in subdivided flats. Can you do something to help them, put a roof over their heads? Thank you, thank you, Doctor Kwak for the question. Indeed. There are many challenges that face Hong Kong. It is inevitable that there will be an economic downturn. I hope members will all understand that in relation to supply of public housing, we're trying to catch up the shortfall. We do whatever we can. As the member said, that transitional housing is only a halfway stop. Before we can supply sufficient public housing in the long run, we're happy to do this stopgap measure. We have a shortage in land supply. I don't have a crystal ball to tell you when we will be able to finish your job, but we'll do our best. For those people who have difficulty making ends meet. Well, as I've said, that for those who are not living in PRH units, those who are not on CSSA, those who are eligible for PRH and they have been waiting for three years, they will be given a cash subsidy. We are making preparations at full steam. We hope that in the middle of next year, something will be done. I want to ask that the subsidy will be given to them until they get a flat allocation, right?
It's not a matter of shortage of land. In fact, we have many options or solutions. But then the administration has been refusing that, for example, the golf course and also for idle government land and also some of the military camps currently occupied by the by the People's Liberation Army in Hong Kong.
So has there been any progress in making use of those sites, Bureau Director? Thank you, Doctor Kwak, for your follow-up question. You talk about the cash subsidy and the plan is as Doctor Kwak just said. With regard to use of certain sites, we have been liaising closely with the Development Bureau. But then what about the progress? What about the PLA's camp and also the golf course and also abandoned or idle land? We're talking about over two thousand hectares of such size. So why can we not use those? As Doctor Kwak might be aware, with regard to the task force on the supply of land, actually the TNH Bureau has been following up on that very closely. Well, Bureau Director, I'd like to know the progress. So are you telling us that for three years, nothing, no progress has been made whatsoever?
Well, I think it's better for the Development Bureau to answer that question. Yes, Doctor Helena Wong? Yes, Chairman, I'd like to follow up on this. It's about H- oh oh six. So that's about the housing management, it's about the MWIS and also MBIS, etc. So I'd like to ask a related question. Well, for the housing department and also the the buildings department, do they have plans to conduct any inspection on sewage systems so that there can be inspection of those buildings? Because we've been following up on Fu Tai Block of Fu Hang Estate because there have been some conversion of certain pipes and so on. And as a result, when the pipes go to the rooftop, well, because of the ventilation system that could also affect the safety of the lower floor residents. Well, I asked the administration, but then they told us that what it has to do with the buildings department or the housing department. Well, other than the Fu Hang Estate, I've also been to some estates in Hakkaun West. I can see that some of the housing estates are very old and they've been redeveloped, but then does that mean that they are safe? Well, recently I've been to Seoul Estate. Well, after the redevelopment, it looks really very nice, but then it's just next to a hillside. So when I went up, apparently some of the rooftops, when you look at the sewage system, well, when you look at the ventilation pipes, it's right opposite the opposite block and it's facing the medium to upper floors. So I'd like to know in designing such buildings, whether it's in the private sector or public sector. So for the sewage systems, ventilation pipes, so it's no less than one point two meters above the rooftop. But then the fact that it's facing the opposite block, it's very close to it. So is it some design problems that they have? Well, my personal view is that in terms of regulation of this, well, when it comes to the legislation and also regulation and even the legislation itself, you're lagging behind. So do you have plans to conduct inspection? And will the buildings department step up enforcement to find out if the law is lagging behind? So I'm talking about, well, design installation and also repair and maintenance and even inspection, you are lagging behind in all those fronts. So just think about those living there. So is it really safe from the public health perspective? So I'd like to know whether or not the Bureau Director has anything to say about it. Well, allow me to make a preliminary response and then I'll ask the Buildings Department and also our colleagues from the ICU to respond. With regard to this independent checking unit, with regard to Fu Hang Estate, Quan Hang Tai Block, we are conducting an investigation. We haven't come to any conclusive decision as to what happened. And of course, like Doctor Helena Wong, we are very concerned about the health and well-being of the residents there. And then for the details, I'll defer to our ICU colleagues and also the director of, the director of Buildings to respond. Yes? Yes, Mister Choi?
Yes, my name is Choi Wei Tong. Yes, I'd like to answer the question raised by Doctor Helena Wong. So it's about the sewage system in public housing estates. She asked whether or not in the wake of the pandemic, are we going to conduct investigation or inspection? Well, in the wake or in the light of the Hung Tai Block incident and in response to a request by CHP, we conducted an inspection of the sewage system of the Hung Tai Block. Subsequently, we also looked at the repair and maintenance of the units and it's the responsibility of the occupants. So it's not about the design of such system. The most important thing is that the sewage system cannot be easily altered to the extent that it might not be in line with the building's ordinance requirements. So as far as we are concerned, if we receive any reports or complaints, then we'll send our colleagues to conduct an inspection to the sewage system to see if it has been altered or modified or whether or not it's no longer in line with the original design. And if that is the case, then we'll ask the occupant or the own OC concerned to make or take remedial actions to ensure that it's in line or is in compliance with the building's ordinance. So for the rest, I wonder if the Buildings Department has anything to add?
Yes, let me supplement on the legislation. In simple terms, we've been doing revision work of the legislation and in two thousand fifteen, we already completed the first phase of amendment and we are now going through the second stage. So we will now introduce a new system because this is a general regulatory framework and we're going to replace it with something new. So in two thousand twenty one, we're going to submit the new bill. And at this stage, we are also looking at how we can expedite the process. Yes, Mister Chen Cheng Ying? My question is THB zero one six and zero four nine. And then in zero one six, it says that the CNS department sees that the number of SEU occupants has increased from ninety three thousand nine hundred to by two thousand five hundred to ninety six thousand four hundred. And there are a number of measures that is IH, so there'll be fifteen thousand more units in the coming three years. And also for eligible residents, they would also be given a subsidy until the time when they are allotted a flat. But then with regard to the ninety six thousand four hundred households, how many of them are not eligible for public rental housing? And if that is the case, then for this group of households, will there be any solution to the problem? Or is it, as the Bureau Director said, that under the Community Care Fund, there'll be two rounds of cash subsidies so that for those CSSA recipients, they'll be getting the subsidy and what about their long term housing needs? So that's, that's for this. And then for oh four nine, the RVD said that there'll be fifteen directorate grade officers and their pay and so on will be six point seven million dollars and also thirty nine million dollars. But then the reason for this increase is to charge this special rates on vacant first hand private residential units. But then if you look at the current progress, it's been very slow. We are not sure whether or not you'll be able to complete the process within this Legco session. So for this group of people, have they been hired? Because they would also be responsible for building the computer system and also flow charts and also publicity materials. So that in three months after the law has been enacted, they can start the process. But then what about the recruitment process? What is the progress and can there be any changes to that? Thank you. Bureau Director, thank you. Concerning substantial housing and so on, I'll defer to the deputy director to answer the question. With regard to policymaking, well, we are talking about the vacant first hand private residential units. So basically, we have to make preparation for the legislation and then for the relevant work, it has not started. So depending on the following, first, whether or not the policy can be approved. In other words, the legislation can be passed within this session and also whether or not the budget is approved. So in any case, either one of these, whether it's the law or the budget has been changed, then basically this project cannot be implemented and I'm sure you all understand it because given the current progress in this council, we have encountered a lot of delays. That's why we will have to wait and see and then we'll make proper preparation in the light of what happens. So with regard to SDU occupants, I'll see if the deputy director can supplement. On the number of SDUs, as you talk about the survey, is the survey findings. And there is no distinction between the eligibility of the occupants with regard to application for PRH. So for the applicants who have already waited for three years and yet they have not been assigned or allocated a flat, whether or not they'll be eligible for further subsidy, we will have to come up with criteria. Some of them might be living in SDUs, others not. And therefore, in the end, as to how we are going to resolve this problem of SDUs in the long run, we have to come up with a sufficient number of PRH flats and under the LTHS. We have already given the figures and then in the interim, we will also have to rely on interim housing. Thank you. Next, Miss Chan Ho Yen, five minutes. Thank you. My question is H zero zero three and zero zero seven. Just now, the Bureau Director already responded to my question with regard to the waiting time for PRH is about five point four years and about two hundred and fifty thousand people are living in SDUs. So it's been a source of grievance in the community because if you don't have a roof above, over, above your head, then how can you be happy? So I can give you a very simple example. If you do want to resolve this problem, for example, for interim housing, most of us are very supportive. But then what the administration has been doing is that you're only working on Taikok Choi Ho Fan Road and you're consulting on this and then the expiry date would be the fifteenth of April. And yet the lands department, well, if you look at the substance of the consultation, well, they just asked if the public would be supportive of that. With regard to the number of units and also transport arrangements and so on, you have not been able to convince the residents there to support it. In particular, in Taikok Choi, well, for, for public leisure facilities like parks and so on is inadequate. So if you want people to support you, then at least you have to make sure that for the residents, for the people in a neighborhood, you, you can provide sufficient facilities before you can convince them that you can build interim housing there. Well, you have given us the figures, but then when it comes to detail implementation, if you want the neighborhood to support you, then you should adopt the right attitude. So basically, you should be able to honor what you promised before. For example, for recreation facility and so on, or else you would not be able to convince them. You've been telling us that you have difficulty in identifying sites and so on. These are things that you should have done. That's number one. And also on zero zero seven, you talk about public housing. Yes, we need that. But then for the redevelopment of Lot Man Estate, you will have to wait until Chan Shin May Chun has been relocated before you can demolish them. But then for Lot Man San Chun, just opposite the road, you have this cooperative project there and yet we haven't heard about anything with regard to the redevelopment of the cooperative project. So you could, you could have done it. So that for the old style Lot Man San Chun houses, they can also be redeveloped and then you'll be able to increase the number of residents. But then, well, there are many elderly residents there and they have to walk a long flight of stairs before they can go to their homes.
Thank you. In relation to the redevelopment of Chan Shin May Chun and Lot Man San Chun, they are projects of the Hong Kong HS. I believe that at an appropriate time, the Hong Kong Housing Society will promulgate the details. In relation to nearby cooperative society projects, I understand that the URA has conducted feasibility studies. Details will be announced in due course. In relation to Hoifan Road, I will defer to the, I'm the secretary. Thank you. Let me explain to you about the Hoifan Road project. For a transitional housing project, we would ask an NGO to apply first for a short term tenancy before they can move forward. There will be a district consultation. The district officer will issue simple documents for just a general consultation. We'll be able to give you more information shortly. The NGO will also have to explain in detail at district council meetings. The district officer will also have to accompany the NGO to present the details and supporting facilities in order to garner support. Under every project, we will take into account the number of flats, supporting facilities, whether there will be any adverse transport or environmental impact, any other issues relating to, say, sewerage. All the requirements will be complied with. We'll follow the established procedure to do our work. We understand that local residents would like to get more, as much information as possible in order to have their worries allayed. We will provide as much information as possible in order to do that. Just now, the secretary said that you conduct consultation without any information. Why do you expect that there won't be any opposition? You said that you will give information at the district council meetings. How do you think that you will be able to get district support to find land? And you also talk about the URA, but you are the secretary. You are involved in the overall planning. You are the secretary. I asked you about redevelopment projects. It's under your purview. If nothing is done, then it's a waste of the land. Well, I only said that they are looking into the projects. I believe that they will announce the details in due course. Well, we all work together to provide housing for those who are in need. Mister Wilson Oh, I'd like to follow up on twenty seven and thirty. There are two projects under the Hong Kong Housing Society. One is letting scheme for subsidized sale units with premium unpaid. The other one is for flat pilot scheme for elderly owners. Now you have to at least wait for five point four years and there are about two hundred thousand households living in substandard housing. I've asked you informations about these two projects. There are two hundred and sixty units, five hundred and six applications. Seventeen of them have been approved. Is it something you expected? Is there room to improve the situation? Because on the number alone, I think is far from satisfactory. Is it because there is lack of publicity or the requirements are too tight? Would you consider H O S flats under the Housing Authority under the letting scheme so that those living in substandard units can move there? In relation to the flat for flat scheme, there are there are seven applications with three approvals only. Have you looked into why there is such a low successful rate? You've never given me a direct answer. Now is the chance. And I'd like to also ask about thirty. Well, there are there are random checks and scheduled checks in relation to the sale of first-hand residential properties authority. Your breakdown is it's unsatisfactory. I have looked into it. There are only about a hundred or so inspections. I think that random checks are better than scheduled checks. How come that you have never heard a request? Can you increase the number of unscheduled inspections so that people will always be on their guard and not to flout the law? I I will defer to the director of the authority to give you information about inspections first. I'd like to say first that well, the Hong Kong H S is the vehicle we use for new ideas. If it's well received, we won't rule the possibility of asking the Hong Kong H A to take it up and increase this the capacity. Mister Chan, of course, there is always room to increase the number of random checks. Well, whether they are random checks or not, surprise checks or non-surprise inspections, there is a certain degree of deterrent deterrence. We require relevant parties to abide by the law on their own accord. And we conduct surprise and non-surprise inspections regularly. About the letting scheme and the flat-for-flat scheme, I'd like to say that at the beginning when we formulated these two schemes, there were no indicators because we would like to make good use of resources. We only ask owners to make available make available their flats when there is a need, so we have not set any targets. Having said that, we would like those who are in a position to make available their flats to do so. We have an improved or an enhanced measure. Previously, the entire unit will have to be let and shared with the owner. It wasn't well received, so we improved the measure. The entire flat can be let out or only a part of it is to be let out, is to be let. Well, there are two hundred and seventy-seven applications by owners and five hundred and six applications from prospective tenant. We would like to wait for another year before we conduct a review. There are many different views about how to improve the scheme. Say, whether to set the rental higher or lower. We would first, we would like to wait for the scheme to run for for one year before we make any more decisions. For the flat-for-flat scheme, depends on whether the the elderly owners has the need to change to another flat. This scheme was launched later, so we would like to wait for a bit of time before we review the situation. I would like to follow up on forty-six. It is a very brief reply. It says that the housing, well, the Housing Authority as well as the Bureau about arrangements for Shagley interim housing. They said that there is no arrangement. They said they have taken into account all the considerations. They would they would keep the Shagley interim housing. That means those who are living in the interim housing there will not know when they will be asked to leave. It seems that there is no timetable as to when Shagley will be cleared and turned into PRH. I wasn't only asking about the existence or otherwise of Shagley interim housing. Regarding arrangements of the epidemic, they have commandeered Chunyong Estate to be used as a temporary quarantine center. We don't know when the epidemic will abate or when Chunyong Estate will be allocated to the four thousand households. The government said that there will be a six thousand one-off subsidy, but they don't say anything about what happens afterwards. These households meet the eligibility of Shagley interim housing because they are homeless. This is a homeless test. Since there is such a large amount of empty flats in Shagley, according to the Oriental Daily, eighty percent of them are vacant and every year the government spent five million dollars to maintain and repair them. How come that the government is willing to pay an amount to those who can't move into Chunyong Estate? These households already said in a press conference that they don't mind going to Shagley. You can you can move them there and it will not deviate from your existing policy. Because this is to provide a home for those who are homeless and they have to be on the waiting list. So Chunyong Estate prospective tenants meet this requirement. My question is, will you be more flexible? To resolve the problems for those who are scheduled to move into Chunyong Estate, you expect them to find subdivided flats using the six thousand? Well, perhaps if Doctor Cheng had spoken to us earlier, then he would have asked his questions differently. Well, whether they are Faiming Estate or Chunyong Estate, we've always used the same approach, which is people-oriented. For these four thousand six hundred affected households, we have sent them letters. We asked them whether they want to move into interim housing or whether they would move to a different district. Or, three, whether they would like to continue to wait for Faiming Estate or Chunyong Estate. We have received replies. If they indicate that they would like to move into interim housing, we have sufficient interim housing units to meet the demand. For those who would like to move to a different district, we have sufficient PRH units to house them. In the interim, if they'd like to move to a different district, we would we would help them. If they would like to continue to wait, we let them to do so. If they say they have difficulties and they'd like interim housing, we would allow them to do that. We have the capacity to deal with it. I only have five minutes. First, I have the letter with me. There are only two options. First, to wait for Chunyong Estate. Two, to withdraw the waiting at Chunyong Estate and find and wait for another flat in the urban area. We've written to the Housing Authority, but they said they can't help. I have the information. I can give you a copy of the letter. I'm not going to argue with Doctor Cheng. As reported by the H A or the Housing Department, and I believe that they have done everything they can. For those who are waiting for Chunyong Estate, we have sufficient interim housing and PRH units in other districts to deal to house them. If indeed, that's our reply, please give us the letter to follow up. But I I'd like to say that I believe that the H A or the Housing Department will not do that. Miss Alice Mac, five minutes. I'd like to use my five minutes on one point. With this drastic change in the economic situation, we expect that lots of people will be forced to take unpaid leave, will be laid off, will will underwork. And this only is this is only worse because of what happened previously. They find difficulties just to find a place to live.
For people living in substandard housing, they've been waiting for public rental housing for a long time. So measures can be put in place to help them. What we are worried about is that when their income suffers as a result of the downturn in the economy. So there'll be more people who will be forced to live in substandard housing. So what is going to happen? So if you look at the number, H O two five. So it's about the rent control for SDU occupants and also for people waiting for PRH. So can they be given a cash subsidy or rent subsidy? Well, you said that you could only introduce this pilot scheme in the second half of next year. So for people who have been waiting, if you told them earlier on, they might be prepared to wait. But then, given the downturn in the economy, all right, we've been given this double blow. So it's like adding frost to snow. So how can they wait for another year or so? So for the entire review exercise on the landlord and tenant consolidation ordinance, can that be done more expeditiously so that their right to live can be protected so that they would not be be short-changed by their landlords, having to pay high utility charges and also high rents and so on. And also for the rent subsidy, can that be introduced earlier instead of having to wait until the second half of next year? Because if they have to wait that long, so it's not really very efficient. I don't think that's acceptable, Bureau Director. Okay, Bureau Director? Thank you, Miss Alice Mac, for your question. First, as I said, with regard to the longstanding cash subsidy, so that will be introduced in the second half of next year. But then there'll be two rounds of subsidy rolled up by the C C F and I'll see how that can be expedited. And of course, we're talking about the severe impact of the pandemic. And of course, many of us or many people have been taking no pay leave or many might have been laid off already. So this is a very imminent and urgent need. And the S L government has been looking into what we can do. For example, on the anti-epidemic fund for the first round and second, we're going to support the sectors. And the second round would also be would also be introduced to protect jobs. So that for those who are suffering a loss in income, we'll see what we can do to help. But then with regard to the drafting of the relevant scheme and also the completion, we'll have to wait until it's finished before we can announce the details. So please be a bit more patient. I don't think that will take a that will take very long. With regard to rent control, well, the first meeting will be held in April. And then in the process, we'll be listening to views in the community. And of course, for this study and to come up with a feasible solution, that will that can only take place through the task force, which will be looking into the situation on the ground. And I don't want to preempt what the task force is going to do. Because this task force comprises some members who are independent. And they are from outside of the government and I have an open mind to listen to their views so that they be able to speak their mind. And then in the end, we'll be able to get a solution that will be acceptable to all parties concerned. So please give it a bit of time because for rent control is something that has been debated in the community for years. It's been very controversial and therefore, I think it's already a big challenge that we intend to implement something to introduce rent control. And please do respect the work of the task force. I'm sure that will help. I've already given the Bureau Directors three minutes to answer my question, but then what you said was really disappointing. All right, if it has to be looked into and then there might be controversies and so on and so forth. But then Bureau Director, given the downturn in the economy and given the fact that the public is suffering from double blow, well, their bargaining power would be very low. So when they try to negotiate with their landlords, they simply do not have any bargaining power. So there is a high chance that they could be short-changed by their landlords. And therefore, if we wait till the second half of next year, yes, the C C F might try to help in the interim, but then they are actually suffering. So how can they wait? Bureau Director, yes, rent subsidy is one of the ways to offer them cash subsidies to help them tide over the difficulty. But then there are also similar schemes that could also achieve the same effect. For example, there can be an income subsidy or even wage subsidy or even a cash allowance. These are cash. So the most important thing is there are relief measures to help them in order to tie them over this difficult period of time. Yes? Doctor Lo Wei Quo. My question is about the opening remarks by the Bureau Director. He said that according to the projection under the LTHS, what the total supply would be four hundred and thirty thousand units in ten years. And then that would also cover some two hundred and ten thousand PRH flats and also ninety one thousand other subsidized sale flats. But then, when compared to previous figures, well, the gap has been narrowed because the total target has been adjusted downward. But then if you look at the gap, we are still talking about some twenty nine thousand units. So I'm very concerned that the gap would only widen first. Given the serious downturn in our economy, more people might be eligible for PRH applications. What's more, is that well, you talk about the twenty nine thousand unit gap, but then that's on the presumption that you'll be able to complete these units on schedule. So it's very optimistic. But then in your opening statement, the Bureau Director did not mention the possibility of redeveloping older states so that there can be an increase in the number of units. Well, for the redevelopment of old estates, given the current situation, that would be outside the current
given the current situation, that would be outside the current plan of the HA. Well, one of the examples, as Mr. Frank Chan might be aware, is about Shaqip May Estate. Because you had, had tea with them and then you talk about the old housing estates. And then for the low-density part, well, it's very rundown. So it's a shopping mall and also there is some, a football pitch. So for example, if you can use the football pitch and build a high-rise there, if it's a PRH flat, then the number will be very high. And then for the low-density part of that housing estate, you can turn around and provide more flats. Not only would that improve the living condition of the existing tenants. Second, after this turnaround, for the low-density part, you'll be able to make better use of that and many flats can be built there. So in this regard, I don't understand why the administration apparently has adopted a very conservative attitude. So in the wake of the downturn in our economy, in fact, such redevelopment would also bring about jobs in the construction sector. So more jobs can be created. So it's a multiple win situation. So Bureau Director, can you share with us your thoughts on this? And whether you would be more proactive in considering these redevelopment projects? Thank you. Bureau Director? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lo, for your question. Well, it's a question of perspective. During the past ten years or so, according to the information that Hannah, well, in twenty oh nine, in twenty oh nine and twenty ten, up till now, it's been a ten-year period. And some fourteen projects have been undertaken for the redevelopment of old areas or old districts. And coming up, we have four more. I understand that you've been very insistent on this because you'd like to increase PRH supply within a short space of time. And the reason why you're so excited about this, that's because you attach a lot of importance to that and that's fully understandable. I've also personally been to Shaqip May with Dr. Lo and we've talked to the residents there. And because of some circumstances that we need to consider, that's why we haven't taken a decision. But then at the same time, we also have to consider the, for those who are on the waiting list and if a particular housing estate has to be redeveloped, what about those who are living there? So we will have to rehouse them before we can undertake that redevelopment project. But then, before the redevelopment project can be completed, some of the units will have to be offered to the incumbent occupants or tenants. So we will have to be very careful as to the number of additional flats that we can have by redevelopment, by redeveloping an estate and also the waiting term and also the economic benefit. But then in any case, redevelopment of older estates has been something that we would be prepared to consider so long as it's cost-effective, so long as it's in line with our policy, we'll be considering them very seriously. Can I supplement? Because just now in your reply, the Bureau Director said that what redeveloping older states is not something new, is not novel. In fact, that's been proven cost-effective. So why can't you consider that more proactively? Including Shaqip May Estate? In particular, these are outside the existing plans. So it's not about having one new block and then for the existing waitlist applicants, they'll be waiting for a long time. In fact, that's been in use in the past and if people have a better chance of getting a flat, they welcome it. Yes, Mr. Quo, why come?
Yes, I'd like to follow on Dr. Lo's question on redevelopment of older states. In fact, the Housing Authority has suggested that many times. In fact, there are some twenty-one redevelopment estates. They are having very long histories already. And if you do not redevelop them, then if there is a wave of redevelopment, you simply will not be able to finish it in time. So that's my advice and therefore, you will have to expeditiously deal with it. My question is about question twenty and twenty-four. So one is about public housing, another one is about private housing. Well, as we are facing a downturn in the economy and then for eligible applicants, the number will go up. In particular, even for those who have been, who have had, who have been disqualified, they will now become eligible again. So for public rental housing supply, is it like what you said in the beginning that you can be more flexible? And be, let me be frank with you. Well, when I first heard about this flexible approach, I would reject it right away because when it comes to land supply and housing supply in Hong Kong, well, we have been developing at Snail's Place. So it's hard to get you moving. So given the very difficult situation and also because of this mutual destruction attitude by the, by certain sectors of the community, well, by increasing public housing supply, I'm sure you'll be able to salvage some of the popularity with the public. But then regrettably, if you look at the several rounds of LTHS progress report, apparently the number has come down. So we have rarely heard about any progress made. So I really want to see something good happen. And next is about private housing supply because of the current climate. Well, many developers will try to slow down the pace of development. I don't want that to happen because they'd like to wait and see. And when the economy turns around the corner, then they'll be prepared to build more flats. So whether it's public housing or private housing, in particular for public housing, you will have to increase supply. But then for private housing, you should not allow them to drag their feet because we don't want to see a, a slow supply of private units. Bureau Director? Indeed, for a long time, in terms of rolling out new projects, from time to time, there might have been slippage. But then in the process, I'm sure all of us here understand it. That is, in the process of consultation, from the application of funding to the time when we get the actual approval, we have encountered a lot of obstacles. We understand that for the residents in a community, they have high hopes on that. But, and, and we also understand those who are waiting for allocation of flats, they might be very eager. So let me ask my colleagues to explain the details. Yes? Deputy Director? So switch on her microphone, please. Deputy Director? Yes? Ms. Quo? Yes, I'd like to welcome the question. So I'd like to explain how we have been working to increase land supply so that we can increase housing supply. Well, as the Bureau Director said earlier in his opening remarks, he already referred to this.
Let me supplement. Apart from twenty nineteen in the policy address last year, there was an announcement of a series of new measures. They include making use of the land resumption ordinance and to implement the land sharing pilot scheme. You may recall that back in twenty eighteen, there was a measure to change nine private lots to change for public housing development. They will be implemented by faces. One of the lots on Quarry Road will be able to provide housing supply within five years. It involved no land rezoning. It is a brownfield site. That's for your information. At the end of last year, we have conducted a feasibility study. We will be, we can increase the plot ratio by thirty percent. It will help in some way. If we find that there are sites that are, that construction has already started and if possible, we will increase the building height. There are also some studies under the Housing Authority. They involve industrial buildings. We look into the possibility of turning them into residential use. Regarding redevelopment of housing estates or increasing housing supply that existing sites, we'll continue to do that. There are some sites in new development areas and some involve rezoning. Ms. Lo, I thank the Undersecretary for going to Shaqip May with us. There is still room to provide more. I don't know what difficulties you have in mind. I've been involved in redevelopment of Park Tin Estates since I became a legislator. It was very well done. Some of the households were relocated. If the arrangements are made well, then everyone will win. You can identify the potential in Changsha Pole. We have to tell you about Shaqidmei and then there is Chongxinmei Chun in Tōkāwan. We've been talking about one thing. Apart from redevelopment in all districts, you also have to remove barriers. Do something about the plot ratio, say in Kai-Tak or Kaolun Tong. Developers may pay a premium and build higher. Some people I know from the housing sector said that well, you can increase the building height in public housing projects. So you should not be calcified. I'm sure you can find some professionals to give you new ideas. There are always some room you can maneuver for plot ratio. For Civil Servants Cooperative Society, I know that there is something in Tōkāwan. What about other districts? How many units? How many more units can you produce? I only ask you three points. First, redevelopment in all districts. Well, you fail to convince, to persuade me. Well, Park Tin has already been redeveloped and housed some Park Tin residents. Well, what feasibility studies have you done? And the third point is about Civil Servants Cooperative Society. Secretary. The H A does not oppose to redevelopment in all districts. Civil servants cooperative societies, whether they are H A projects or H S projects, we communicate with them closely, but they are under their purview. I need to respect them. It's not that I don't want to say it or I don't know, but I need to respect these organizations to divulge information and make announcements as they see fit. In some districts, say Kaolun Tong, people think that the plot ratio can be relaxed. I've been to the district. Currently, the capacity for the transportation as well as the sewerage is limited. When this infrastructure has been improved and expanded, there is the potential for relaxing the plot ratio. Some members mention of our Shaqidmei estates and visits have been made, perhaps. We can talk to H S, the Hong Kong Housing Society, and we can have a meeting and we'll tell you what difficulties we have. We don't need to get bogged down with this here, because these are technical issues. I have heard about Shaqidmei most. Ten years ago was Park Tin. We should be pragmatic. We should get the job done. After the meeting, we'll make arrangement with the H A for a meeting. Mr. Tong Li Zhe. In the opening remarks of the secretary, he talked about housing supply in the coming ten years. There is still a shortfall of twenty-nine thousand units in the coming ten years. In reply to members' questions, he said that he would try his best to find more land to increase supply. As you know, that I'm very concerned about this matter. How do you deal with people who are living in substandard housing? Transitional housing is very important, because it will help. So in relation to thirty, number three, I'd like to ask some follow-up questions. Well, you've initially said it at ten thousand and then later you add another five thousand. Is there any way to increase the number again? As you said that in the coming ten years, there is still a shortfall of twenty-nine thousand, and a lot of people still live in subdivided units. So you need to rely on NGOs. That's why the goal is set so low. Secondly, well, there is this task force. There'll be twenty-two more people working for it. In your reply, you said that. Well, is it the case that the additional manpower is to deal with transitional housing? Or does this, or is it the case, as stated in paragraph five, that it is in relation to complicated work involved? Are they transitional housing? I'll pause here. I defer to the undersecretary, because the chairperson of the task force is Mr. So. I thank Mr. Jie for his question. The first part is the, the goal, the objective. We would like to do more. But our hands are tied by the land. We have found sufficient land for the initial ten thousand units. We still need to conduct some land investigations and some advanced work. For the additional five thousand, we will consider G I C sites that can be used as transitional housing in the short term. Well, transitional housing is not an easy task. We have to continue to find more land. In this budget, twenty-two posts are added to the task force to assist it to take up the work, to take up the vetting work, coordination work, and implementation. There are, as I said, that we have identified land for ten thousand units. Some of them are large-scale transitional housing projects. That means this task force is mainly tasked to deal with transitional housing. It's not the case that you rely on NGOs to churn out transitional housing. The main problem is a shortage of land, then I understand. I'd like to also follow up on zero four two, in relation to subdivided units. Then you have set up a working group to conduct a study. Do they know how many subdivided units are there? Back in twenty sixteen, there were ninety-two thousand such units. Should they know the number of subdivided units and how many of them are compliant with the law and how many are not? The T H B will provide all the support the working group needs. We will extract relevant information, of course, for substandard housing, subdivided units is one. Well, those that are in industrial buildings is another. We will work with the Census and Statistics Department. We'll also ask consultants to conduct the study. We keep an open mind. We'll be pragmatic. Thank you. Mr. Jeremy Tem, five minutes. Is in relation to thirty-nine. Here it sets out the percentage of flats of different sizes A to E. It says that in twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, I'd like to focus on A, those less than forty square meters in sellable area, thirty-one percent. In the past, we see that in relation to mini flats. I'd like to know about the government's stance. In twenty twenty, well, for type A is forty-two point five percent. In twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen is about thirty-one percent. For twenty twenty, I see that there is an increase to forty-two point five percent. Is it the case that you have changed your policy? And as a result, for class A units is increased from a steady thirty-one percent between twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen to forty-two percent in twenty twenty. Is it the change, is it a change in policy? And as a result, most flats are under forty square meters.
So in fact, for such units, it's about forty square meters. So it can't be called a bed space apartment, because you're talking about some twenty square meters of those. But then if you'd like to target these flats, will you consider that within these units, there should be one additional category? That is, for those units that are smaller than twenty square meters. So that would be able to tell whether, yes, they might be classified as category A. Well, that has been increased from thirty-one percent to forty-two point five percent. So for these super small or nano flats, so to speak, has have been a very substantial increase. And would the government try to stop deconstruction of such as small units or super small units? Because for the number of new flats, you might not be able to achieve your target. So what is your policy target then? Um, thank you, Mr. Tem, for your question and comment. In fact, the government's policy is very clear. So we will not be looking at the size of unit. So looking at the latest government act, you can see that for starter homes, well, if you look at the terms of the lease, so it's about the distribution of starter homes. So for studio flats, that would only account for twenty percent, and then for one-bedroom apartment, twenty-five percent, and then for two-bedroom or above, fifty-five percent. Because we do understand that, well, Hong Kong people's expectation is that they should have more spacious homes, because for the per capita living space is relatively small for Hong Kong. But then, as Mr. Tem would understand, the reason why in twenty twenty, these super small units has increased so substantially, that's because of the property prices and affordability and also the natural balance in the market. But then, is it something that we'd all like to see? Well, it depends. Because recently, if you look at the private housing affordability ratio, well, sorry, let me interrupt, because in the past five years, they've been able to keep it at thirty-one percent. So what have you done in order to ensure that it stayed at about thirty-one percent? But then, why all of a sudden the big jump to forty-two percent? Well, in terms of our policy, we have not put in place any new policy to determine the size of the flats. But then, what you just said might have to do with property prices and second about affordability and market forces. So all in all, they play together, and then that might have led to this situation. But then, even for subsidized flats and also starter homes for one to two per p flats, we are talking about an average size of about seventy square feet, and then that would already explain our attitude. So I think facts speak louder than than everything. So would you come up with an additional category so that we'd be able to see the trend with regard to these super small flats? Yes, we will have to consider that very carefully, the reason being that, well, when it comes to categorization, what is for statistics purpose? In order to give reference and also tracking and then for study. And if you try to come up with an additional one for research purposes, it's about collection of data. But then what about historical data? How do we redefine that? Yes?
Fernando Jiang. My question is about S D U's, whether it's rent control and also about the cash allowance and so on. Many members have touched on that. Because of the pandemic, as we know, for people living in S D U's, it's really very hard. So we've been asking people to stay at home, but then for tenants of S D U's is so small, and also the hygiene condition is so bad, it's very hard to stay home, in particular for children. And if there are children or people with special needs, for them to stay home, if it's an S D U, I don't know if it's good to their health for them to stay home for that long. We have also noticed what you said for the relief measures. That is, they are not public housing tenants or they are not on C S S A, and they waited for public housing for some three years, and that can only happen in the second half of next year before you can roll out the scheme. That's totally, that's hardly acceptable. Because you're just talking about giving them a very small amount of money so that they'll be able to improve their living environment. So that should have been done immediately, let alone that we are facing this pandemic situation. Why do we have to wait until the second half of next year? It's hardly justifiable. How can you call it timely? So are there any alternatives so that you can hand out the relief as soon as possible? Because for these tenants, quite a large number of them, according to your own statistics, you're talking about some ninety thousand such units, over two-hundred-and-ten-thousand tenants. And then for the N nothing people through these NGOs, you've already got a lot of data about them. So for districts with the largest number of S D U's and for NGOs serving these districts, in fact, they all know who these people are. So can you adopt a more relaxed approach so that you can give the relief to them as soon as possible? And then for rent control? Apparently, we have to wait indefinitely. Yes, it's good for you to have announced that. I did not, I had not expected you to do that, because everybody has been asking you to do this, because for rent control is very basic, so that they would go by the rules. And then they would also have to meet certain criteria. They have to be reasonable. And then the living condition should be balanced instead of being lopsided in favor of the landlords. So why do we have to wait until the first half of twenty twenty-one before you can complete the study? And there is still no timetable as to when legislation can be introduced, because we understand that well, you have to have the, you have to have the legislation in place before you can implement it. Given Hong Kong's efficiency, we should not have to wait for that long. Yes, Bureau Director, thank you for your question and comment. Indeed, for people living in S D U's, in particular for families with kids, it's hard. In particular, in the light of the pandemic, everybody will have to stay home. But I believe the situation is, what you talk about are the long-term measures, and it takes time for us to deal with them. I understand, and we will work hard on it. And if we can possibly roll them out earlier, of course, we will. But then, given the current situation, our thinking is that through the Anti-Epidemic Fund, so we should be more relaxed and we should be fast so that we can give timely relief to those in need. That's what we intend to do, and if we can separate the two. So with regard to the impact of the pandemic and also the downturn in the economy and also the the suffering of the people, we've been working very hard on that already. But during the past couple of days, we have never ceased working on it. But then, on the Anti-Epidemic Fund, you talk about thirty billion dollars, but then I can't see how that can help the S D U tenants. So are you talking about the second round? Yes, I'm referring to the second round. And I believe that for the first round, as we all know, we basically target different sectors of the economy and also different stakeholders. So we wrote that out in the light of the prevailing situation. And now we are talking about the second round, because the situation has changed and the challenges that we are facing are very different, and the difficulties faced by the community are also very different. We'll be willing to listen. But then, when will you, when will you announce the second round of the Anti-Epidemic Fund? Well, we'll try to do that as soon as possible, but then it's teamwork, and therefore we will have to work as a team.
Next, Mr. Shi Kha Chen.
All right, the administration has been saying that, well, in an exceptional time, we have to adopt exceptional approach. But then apparently, you've been adopting a very wishy-washy approach. So well, for the next ten years, you're talking about, well, an additional thirty thousand units. In fact, for the next two decades, we don't think the situation would improve at all. Because for housing supply, you need plans. But then in terms of the increase in land supply, I'm sure that, well, it will, well, for the next two decades, I don't think we will turn around and see the situation improved. So Chairman, I'd like to respond to two points. So in the opening remarks, and I'd also like to refer to H zero four six. Well, some members have followed up on that. That's about the golf course. The administration did not dare to take it back and then A T A. You said that there would be difficulty taking it back, so that's about the N D A. And then for the Garrison site, you dare not ask. So for public housing redevelopment is within your own court, you should have been able to do it, and yet you dare not do it. So this is really outrageous. What impressed me about you? Well, let me tell you this story. My first impression of you was that, well, when you visited the kids in the S D U's, when you looked at the situation and their plight, you shed tears. So I can see that you were sincere. I understand that there were difficulties, definitely. But then in your role, can you give us some determination and resolve so that you can help resolve some of these problems? Because the easiest thing to go is to go for redevelopment of old estates, and the permanent secretary and the director for housing would find it difficult, because as soon as you embark on it, you would suffer a blow, because the number would shrink. But then, in the long run, it's going to improve the situation. So you should have more determination. You should have the energy to do it. So why are you not daring enough to do it? And also on rent control, I find it very disappointing, because the administration told us that, well, for rent subsidy and rent control, that cannot be separated, because the first rent subsidy will only be introduced in the second half of next year. And then for rent control, I think you are employing a delaying tactic, because how long would your term of government survive? Because you talk about consultation and everything, and then when can you get back then? So I'd like to know, do you have any promise? Do you have any timetable as to when you will make a final decision? And also for the so-called advisory committee, so can you increase the transparency and representativeness instead of just well, favoring your wrong people, and then you can have three ups and three downs in the consultation process, and then it will take forever before you make a decision?
Thank you, Mr. Wen, for your questions. I would also have to be fair to my colleagues, because for the government team in particular, for those of us who are working in the H A, when it comes to P R H projects, we have been working very, very hard. We are very, very dedicated. Well, on redevelopment, we have never given up on that. It's not that we are not going to redevelop, but then it's just that we will have to think very carefully about this. And also for the existing tenants, well, they are suffering already. Yes, some of the flats might be very rundown, and therefore it's undesirable. But then when compared to those on the waiting list and those in S D U's who are suffering more, well, we understand it. Sometimes, we have to be determined and be prepared to bite the bitter bullet. But then, on openness and transparency, when it comes to the study, definitely we will. Because as we have told you, we hope to be able to have the first meeting in April, and of course, by the time when we have the first meeting, the membership list will be published. What about the timetable?
Well, on rent control study, as we have already given you a timetable, we hope that in the first half of next year, we can complete the study. Yes, you have already written down the timetable for the study, but then when will the decision be taken? So you might have thought that I was second-guessing you. So would you be dragging your feet until the end of the term? Is it a yes or no answer? Well, if indeed that's the motivation of the administration, then we would not have embarked on that study at all. Because this is a very difficult time. We would not have embarked on this study, so that for people who are not on the waiting list, those who are not eligible for C S S A, and they've been waiting for P R H for three years. So that shows the commitment of the existing term of government. Yes?
This is Shi Kha Chen. I'd like to ask about forty-six, forty and sixty, and sixteen. In relation to zero four six, it says that as at the end of February twenty twenty for Potin and Shaqley, the occupancy is seventy-eight point eight, seventy-eight point eight point seven percent and twenty point five percent. It means that, well, there is a high vacancy rate for Shaqley, eighty percent. They said that there is a no timetable for redevelopment of Shaqley interim housing. They have wasted a lot of resources. Will they use interim housing as temporary quarantine center or shelters? It's a difficult time for everyone. And I do think that people encounter different degrees of difficulties. Street sleepers are the bottom, are at the bottom. Mr. Andrew Wen talks about extraordinary, extraordinary, extraordinary measures in extraordinary times. I'm sure that the secretary will tell me that, well, interim housing are for particular group of people. They are people who are rendered homeless because of government clearance exercise or natural disasters. They have to pass the homeless test. Wuhan pneumonia is a natural disaster if you deny that it is a human disaster. If people have to wander in the streets and sleep rough, would you consider housing them in interim housing? And in zero four six, it says that since twenty seventeen for Shaqley interim housing, there has not been any move-ins. In twenty eighteen, during Taofunmangkut, Taofunmangkut really ravished Hong Kong. Still, at that time, there has not been any referrals of affected households to Shaqley. What is it for? You, you didn't, you didn't think that Typhoon Mangkut is a natural disaster? Next is zero four oh. For those who are affected by the phasing out of illegal housing in industrial buildings, since twenty sixteen, the number of affected households stands at zero. That's strange. And every month, there has been a few cases of affected cases, but in relation to those who are affected by phasing out of illegal housing and in industrial buildings is zero. That's very strange. Between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, how many law enforcement actions have they taken in relation to this matter? And how many people are affected as a result? And in relation to twenty, to zero one six is about subdivided units. The number of subdivided units in the annual report are just an estimate. When will you consider conducting a census for subdivided units? Thank you. First, about Shaqley interim housing. These deep structures themselves are rather old, wirings are old, drainage and pipes are old. So they are subject to a lot of limitations. So we only accept cases at a limited capacity. Well, with restaurants closing after certain hours, there'll be some, there'll be different types of refugees. They can go to our shelters. For those who are affected by converted in industrial buildings, as long as there is a referral from the law enforcement agency, we will handle the case. The reason that the number is zero because we have not received any referrals or the people affected choose not to move in to our shelters or interim housing. Anyone who is rendered homeless can apply to go to our interim housing for three months. If it is proved that they are indeed homeless, they will be changed, moved from shelter, temporary shelter to interim housing. Our doors are always open. If need be, Mr. Xu can refer these cases to us. Subdivided units or substandard housing. I remember that there was a direct survey conducted probably by the ombudsman. When we update the information in twenty twenty, we will conduct a detailed survey. This is scheduled to finish at five past, so we have, we can only allow two more people, Mr. Roy Kong and Mr. Vincent Chang, five minutes. Now there is the fiscal deficit. We can foresee that there will be, the econo, the economic performance will dive. Are you going to go ahead with the Lantau Tomorrow vision that will cost us at least six hundred billion dollars? For to, Lantau Tomorrow vision and similar projects, they are under the purview of the Development Bureau. We're not in the position to answer for us. I believe that the stance of the government has not changed. In December, Secretary, you have commented on Lantau, Lantau Tomorrow. You said that between twenty twenty and twenty thirty, there will be about four, four hundred and thirty thousand units. The government's always saying that we have, that we have Lantau Tomorrow, but you are actually pouring six hundred billion dollars down the drain. I don't care which bureau it is. Frank Chen has commented on this, so there's no reason for him to dodge it this time. With the seriousness of the ongoing epidemic, will you at least give us some indications about Lantau Tomorrow? Are you going to press ahead or are you going to stop? So what is going to happen to this mammoth project? I believe that Hong Kong people will know that there is a land shortage, otherwise there wouldn't be residential flats that is super small. Increasing land supply by reclamation is proved to be effective. As I said, that well, a lot of information and analysis will have to be conducted on the feasibility before one can comment on it. I'm afraid that I don't have all the information, so it is not suitable for me to speak on behalf of other policy bureau. That's why I am very surprised because Mr. Chen has commented on Lantau Tomorrow. Well, there is a chance that our economy will dive. So you need to consider how much money we have and to make good use of it to help people in need. Lantau Tomorrow, the latest cost is six hundred and twenty four billion dollars. And surely it will be more than that in the end. You said that Lantau Tomorrow is to house a lot of people. There is also cap one two four, the land acquisition, land resumption ordinance. I think it's a matter of how you negotiate with people who own land. If you're going to go ahead with Lantau Tomorrow, do you have any other ways up your sleeve to develop land? Have you considered using cap one two four, which is a trump card? Our policy is very clear. The current term of government will not hesitate to make use of land resumption ordinance. If the site is suitable for residential housing, in particular, public housing. They will also, we will also make use of the land sharing pilot scheme to increase housing supply. We never swerve a waiver in our stance. I would like to ask, have you actually considered it? I do think that Lantau Tomorrow is not going to go ahead. And if you're prepared to use land resumption ordinance, what about sites on which barracks are sitting on, military sites? It's something that is the last resort. No one will know when it will be used. It's just like no one could expect the pressure the healthcare sector is under. So I think that I'm not in a position to comment on that. Mr. Vincent Chang. Of course, we have to find different ways to find land. I'd like to follow up on a question I asked seven nine five. I never doubt the determination of the bureau. They are going to add another five thousand to the ten thousand in transitional housing. Back in two thousand eight, well, there were a hundred and fifty three units when the policy address was announced. But I can see now only seven hundred and ninety units are completed. So over five years, only six hundred and thirty seven. So with the new projects, we have altogether one thousand and seven, one thousand seven hundred and sixty. So just about ten percent, a far cry from the objective. Eight thousand five hundred will only come later. And you now say that because of various reasons, the Shangchou Po project will have to be delayed. I'm afraid you won't be able to catch it up. So the fifteen thousand is quite far away. Do you have any sizable land to use? I see that for the X sites understudy, most of them are private land close to six thousand units. And you're still talking about fifteen thousand, so there is a shortfall of five thousand. Would there be sizable idle government land available? If you're only moving at the rate of a hundred or so, then it's a long way away. The secretary talked about approaching more NGOs. After the epidemic, the NGOs will have a lot of support work to do. So apart from URA, will you also ask the HA and the HS to get involved? I thank Mr. Chang for the question and the comments. Indeed, in the coming three years, fifteen thousand in transitional housing was floated last year. From the time when it was first proposed to today, we have found a sufficient land for ten thousand units, which is not easy. We make use of existing school premises and housing. So we can only move ahead very slowly. We have set the target of fifteen thousand in three years. We have got recognition from a community developers have loaned land to us so we can make use, we can make available a large amount of land within a very short time. And internally, the government have identified a number of GIC sites for transitional housing.
And our task group will give a support to the nonprofit making organizations to conduct professional and also land planning and also the relevant technical work. So the mission of these NGOs is that in their day to day operation, they be serving the local residents so that they can provide a timely support to them. In this regard, as far as the government is concerned, earlier on, we got the five billion dollars funding from DFC. And we have set aside a certain amount for the NGOs to engage professional teams to help them with the projects. So for this task force on interim housing, it will also be providing support to these NGOs. So in the process of implementing them, if there are things that are not as good as you might have expected, I would be more than happy to make improvement because we'd like to make improvements on that. I still have some time left. What I'm concerned about is yes, we've been working very hard to fight the pandemic, but then many people have been laid off and they have lost their jobs and therefore the pressure on SDUs is very high. So for the quarantine centers, you have been able to provide that very quickly. So what about this? So can you streamline the whole process so that you can do it as quickly as possible? A brief reply, please. Yes, in the light of the pandemic, I'm sure many people will be affected and they might lose their jobs. So we'll monitor the situation closely. Other than increasing the establishment, we will also be monitoring the situation so that more resources can be deployed by creating some temporary jobs so that for people who are capable, they can also be involved in the process of providing interim housing. Okay? So we'll come back by five fifteen. Thank you.